Everyone, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated at all four places.
I see the position, Bill. Councilor Brennan is Bill and Councilor Campbell is Bill.
You're on a position three.
Tammy Hoffman, position five.
Carl Popoff, Mayor, and of course, our City Administrator, Jody Prince is present. What we've got here to begin with is an urban renewal meeting, and so with that in mind, and I am not a part of the urban renewal, do I can on this exception. At any rate, I'm going to turn it over to the Chairwoman and let her go ahead and continue with this. So ma'am, it's all yours.
Thank you, sir. So we have a discussion today about the RARE funding. Gold Beach Main Street was supposed to get a RARE, I think they called them an intern, and it didn't work out, not from a lack of effort, but they just didn't have the right candidates and not enough candidates. We're not the only community that didn't get one. So the discussion is, can we divert that money to a different position, basically doing the same thing, just being hired differently? And the pros and cons that we talked about was if they actually go to somebody to hire locally, then they might stay and they don't have to deal with RARE every year. And it can be more stable instead of retraining somebody here or there. Jody and Anthony Vier have volunteered to help them get caught up with their brains. That's the part we're missing, is the administrative staff part.
So are we missing, excuse me, are we missing then, we don't have the help, all right, of the RARE person? And the idea I'm getting all this is to see if we can hire one through the city or through...
Main Street would still hire them. We would still, just divert the funds, instead of sending it to the University of Oregon, we would dole it out to Gold Beach Main Street.
All right, now, would then, Main Street go ahead and then choose this person? I'm assuming, if you're putting the bill in a way that...
Well, um...
I'm sorry.
Our vision was that this was going to be a collaborative thing and that this may position may be used a little bit for urban renewal needs. And the office would be here if you were going to graciously offer your office again or whatever. And so that for us, it would be really nice, since that's the situation, to be involved together in the interview process, which we're trying to neck way down so we don't end up having to interview a lot of people.
Obviously, of course, you would bear the biggest, I don't want to say brunt, trying to find the RARE person. But I'm assuming then, in forgiving my hearing, I didn't wear my hearing any tonight, that you would want someone from urban renewal to also sit in on the hiring, is that...
It'd be great, with City Manager involved, yeah. Because, you know, we want this person to work well in most situations.
Right, that's what I was thinking, because, you know, they'd be using my office and other things as well, like that. Okay, great, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the goal would be just to give us the flexibility to change from going with a RARE person, which area worked out great, I think we all thought that was super reverb. But now, there's a different, the same idea is there, but they're thinking about redoing it with a different position. So the question is, is the Urban Renewal Agency willing to divert the funds from a RARE position to a staff or consulting position?
So we would just be taking U of O out of the equation, basically?
Pretty much.
Can I say one other thing? Jody has just spent a lot of time writing a great report to Ford, because Ford was contributing 10,000. City was contributing 13,500. So we were hopeful to bring those two monies together, have a sizable amount of money to at least hire someone, at least half-time for the position. Both funds agreeing to this.
The copy of that update is past and compacted, it starts there. Ford wanted answers to some questions to divert the money also.
I was saying divert, like just to...
Refocus the money for a different, to do the same function, but with a different title and a different way of doing it.
Ford is just a large partner with U of O on RARE positions in our region. So that was kind of just a real easy thing for them. So when the RARE program didn't work out for us this year, they were actually going to pull back their money. And so we had a phone call with them a couple of weeks back to just kind of say, you know, really, the work hasn't changed. It's just, like you said, we're taking U of O out of the equation. So we had to provide some information to Ford on what we see this vision of this person being. And I haven't heard back from them yet, so I hope that's a good sign. So it would be nice if Ford would continue to offer their support at ours.
One thing we didn't notice, and you were really good, Tammy, in pointing it out, was that they're very community-minded. So we renamed the position, instead of Community Coordinator, we named it, um, we named it Gold Beach Main Street Business Outreach Community Coordinator. To get the word business in.
Counselor Campbell?
I just, I like the idea and I really, I really like the fact that it would be some, trying to get somebody local as well. Somebody who would be more than likely to apply, I believe that we would be able to keep them around.
To confirm, was it 13,500 and 18,000 this year, or was it 13,500 for the whole contract?
Our full commandment was 13,500, so I think that was over two budget years, but we committed to 13,500 for...
Okay, so we'd just be recommitting it to the new purpose? So I'll make a motion that we repurpose the RARE grant funding for Gold Beach Main Street to allow them to hire a business outreach and community coordinator?
I'll second that.
Does that sound clear enough? Any discussion? Question? I don't know who's starting.
It was going to be Counselor Campbell, so I guess it would.
You start? I, well, that was easy. So for functional purchases, probably just get with staff to confirm when you need it.
Well, there was a lot of discussion on what the plan was going to be, whether it was going to go, like you said, through Cardinal or...
Do we have to wait for the Ford verification prior to the hiring?
Yeah, it would be your decision.
Because otherwise, we'd get the 13 and see how long that goes if they don't, okay.
Not sure it would last very long. But I think leveraging that we offered...
Right, yeah.
Do we have another call with them, or how does that...
I don't know.
I checked my email right before the meeting and I didn't see the lady that we spoke to. I didn't see anything from her, so I'll give her a call tomorrow and see if they wanted to get together again, or did they need any more information from us? And then I can let her know that their renewal agency approved the change.
So that should be enough to move on. And I think you did a great job on rewriting this grant thing.
Yes, you did.
Whatever you call this, this update answering their questions.
I wasn't sure what, they called it a CBA. I couldn't figure out what that acronym was. Because it didn't correspond with what, so it must be some internal thing to them. Because for me, CBA is a collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, that's not what it is.
Yeah. So anyway, I will, I'll get ahold of Roz tomorrow and then I'll get in touch with you guys via email.
Are we thinking if this all comes together that we're, our goal is to have somebody in January, or what are your thoughts?
Sooner the better, I would think.
Yeah, as far as I can, as soon as you want.
Yeah.
We casually discussed two potential people that we think might be interesting.
And one of those potential people actually was affiliated to the Ford, and I don't know if you know that, when we talk to her tomorrow. But she was part of the...
Where are mainly reported?
When Ford came to our town, she did the bicycle thing, so she, one of the candidates we're looking at. It was called the...
Oh, she was, she was in our leadership cohort.
Right, the Ford Leadership Program.
Do you want to get into names at this point in a public meeting? Do we want to get into names in a public meeting?
Probably not.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think you... We're talking about, right, yeah. And so, yeah, because she was part of the Ford Institute Leadership Program.
Yes, yes.
And her part in it was the bike kiosk at the parking lot of the visitor's center. Okay, yeah. So that might help them, you know, realize that this, the candidate that we have would honor them as well.
Then, we don't have this on the agenda, but do you have an update? Is anybody talking to you about urban renewal? Or the redevelopment around?
There have been a couple of inquiries specifically about the property next to the courthouse. And then the one on the end of town, where the luxury townhomes are. Somebody had come in recently and asked if that was in there or not.
This is not.
I think, I think it is.
I think it is, too.
It is? The condos are not.
Why don't you think it is? No, it's not. It's right here.
Okay, yeah. But that was just...
Yeah, so it's not, so the only one doing a building right now in our district would be the old Sunset property.
Correct. And we have, we haven't spoke specifically to Jordan about it, but he does know it's in the district. So maybe, right now he's focused on the one project, but he has some other ideas going with it.
As a point, we probably as board members shouldn't speak to people because we have to make the decisions correct. So we kind of have to trust staff to do that, or...
Well, you just need to be careful. It's sort of like in the planning thing that I talked about, but... It's not as much as a planning thing, but, you know, you have to declare if you have had through contact. I would say, you know, if we had a hugely robust program where people were being competitive with your money, but right now there aren't people running down your door again to you, so I can't see where... I mean, if you had like a project and one got chosen and one didn't, but we don't really have that. So whatever you feel comfortable doing, but just make sure you declare it immediately.
Yeah, that shouldn't go away to...
It's just the more the appearance of, yeah.
Yeah. You became frustrated, something, and then gave you something.
I can't even think of that term right now.
Ex parte.
Yeah, ex parte, contact, yeah.
Okay. Want me to ask before we close the meeting? Okay. Move into adjournments? Sir? Questions?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned from the urban renewal meeting.
All right.
About 15 minutes before the National House Affairs Americas.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated at all four places.
Anthony Goodman, position three.
Tammy Hoffman, position five.
Carl Popoff, Mayor, and City Administrator, Jody Prince is present as well. We have two council members that are out due to illness, Council Brennan and Council Campbell, but we do have three, so we can continue with our meeting. We do have four. The first order of business is to interview a prospective Planning Commission member. And, you know, I know your family background history and I'm a little bit leery. At any rate, if you would, please come up and just state your name there. And that's all the way up there.
Jordan Popoff.
All right. Now, the way that we handle this is that each counselor will have, and we'll start in position one, going around. Each counselor will have an opportunity to ask you questions. And you will have ample opportunity to answer each and every one of those questions if they so decide to ask them. The other thing, too, is, and when they get through, then if I choose to ask a question, I will... The main thing right now, though, the first thing, is that you will have approximately 30 minutes to go ahead and just tell us a little bit about yourself and your reason, obviously submitted, and everybody has read your application. But if there's anything else that you'd like to talk about right now, there can.
Well, to me, the planning commission is extremely important. I feel that there are many different situations that are going on right now, I mean, which are not new, but within the city, that definitely need to be addressed. I believe that housing is one of them. As a person who is single income and doesn't make a great deal of money, I have been in a situation before where I have felt, certainly wasn't homeless, but I have felt insecure about my housing future. And I recognize that that is an issue that many, many people in this community face, too. So for me, that's a top priority, to look into developing ideas and solutions for that.
Thank you. Well, Counselor Madison, do you have anything else?
What do you think about rezoning lots of properties to accommodate housing? What type of housing would you see developed first?
As far as rezoning, I find that, well, within the city limits, there's a lot of mixed use, anyway. And I feel like we can look into incorporating some housing into those areas as well. I appreciate the work that the City Council has done, and Jody, for the accessory dwelling units as well, looking more into making those a priority.
Anything further than that? Counselor Bell?
What took you so long to reply?
I guess it was certainly, I needed a prompt. Thank you, Jody.
Anything, Counselor Kaufman?
I'm just glad you applied. Do you live in the city limits?
Yes, I do.
Cool.
Yeah.
You don't have to make an exception. You clearly have the qualifications and the ability to do a lot of reading, which is what you learned in doing a lot of... The harder part is when you've got the room full of people and they're all angry for a different reason. And you have to sort through as logically as possible.
Yes.
And come up with a resolution based on fact, not on emotion that you feel. That's the hard part, but I think you could, you have the ability to do that, so. Thank you for applying.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing that I could add, and it was basically building upon what Counselor Kaufman said, and having started out in the Planning Commission a long time ago, those can be some of the rowdiest meetings. Much more so than even city council meetings, they can be, very easily. Because generally speaking, is that you're dealing with their property, for the most part. And people have a tendency to get a little bit on edge when things like that happen. And we've seen rooms fill up, I get, you know, and I know that the Administrator has, I know that Counselor Kaufman has as well, too. But I, too, would just like to thank you so much, dear daughter. And because these commissions that we have, Planning Commission and Budget Committee and what have you, they're exceptionally important, they truly are. And we don't, unfortunately, today, we're having harder and harder time to get people to build them. And I don't truly understand why. But it's always nice to see someone that I, of course, I personally know your qualification. But, you know, step up to the plate and just want to serve their city. So thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
I just, just addressing what Counselor Kaufman and Mr. Mayor said. It's been a long time since we had some pretty hairy Planning Commission meetings. I mean, back in the day, yes, there were, there were times that, while we do have law enforcement here as our sergeant in arms, there have been times that I actually have had to have law enforcement at the planning commission meetings. But it's been probably 10 years since we've had a meeting like that. After the crash, things changed a lot, so, so I don't want to scare you off, so we haven't had those kind of meetings in a really long time.
I do not use police.
Yeah, and then the housing stuff, one of the things that I did not get to you that I will is the housing study that we just recently adopted. Because that has some information in it about what Counselor Madison said about rezoning. Because that's one of the things that we'll look at in the new year, is the housing study was saying that we have enough built of land, but we need to change the result. So that'll be something important, my impression.
All righty. Then, what we are going to do, I have, I don't know that we really have to do.
If you want to jump to it, you can.
Yeah, we'll just go ahead to it. And, Council, I intend to appoint, uh, what word? Why might I appoint, forgive me, Jordan Popoff to the Planning Commission? And therefore, we're going to need, first of all, your okay. So... Counselor?
There's a resolution.
Not a resolution, but...
Confirming appointments if you want to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution, R 1920-05, Planning Commission appointments. Which would point?
All right, thanks, ma'am. Is there a second?
Sir?
Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll get that, a copy of that for you tomorrow. I'll submit it to the front row for you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
All right. Citizens comments, and I do have a request. Lori. Glad you got a chance to speak again, lady.
Okay.
Just to need your name for the record, please.
Lori Van Zant, Gold Beach Main Street. And I was just hoping not to labor this, but to just give a really quick update on what's going on with Gold Beach Main Street, so people are informed. First and foremost, I'd like to say that our City Administrator stepped away. I did a great application to Ford. I was so impressed when I read it, Jody. So well done, thank you. In fact, you've got a hidden grant writer right here. You need to consider diverting your skills to grant writing for the city, but... But one of my favorite lines in her section, can I read something, Jody? It was so cute. She's talking about assisting us until we can stand alone as Gold Beach Main Street and function as our business and outreach coordinator and a grant coordinator, that number one would be a grant coordinator and number two, a community cat herder. That was my favorite part of the whole thing, so, anyway. That was really apropos. So the next thing I want to talk about is our Christmas committee, what's going on with our snowflakes, which has had a lot of good rumors around town. And right now, we're hopeful with the grant we applied for from the city that we will have eight snowflakes. They will be installed by Kuz Curry on the north end of town. In the midst of all this, an anonymous donor found this out and said, "For every snowflake you have, I will match a snowflake, plus I'll give you four. Plus, I'll pay for all the electrical boxes for all those snowflakes." So we just got a check in the mail, Cherie, for how much?
$12,600.
Yes.
Anonymously.
So the plan we have in place is, and it's been kind of a little bit of herding cats, to get this clear, is that we're only putting up eight, and Kuz Curry's agreeing to do it. And then, if we see that they're weather-worthy and do well, then, starting in the new year, we're going to start putting up the brackets all the way through town. And not only do we have Kuz Curry poles, but we've got, Cherie's gotten a picture from Darren and Odog, poles of theirs we can use also. So we want to get the snowflakes here in the new year. And with, a lot of doctors, a lot of different people have done memorial with snowflakes. And so they, we will collect that money in the beginning of the new year, and that will be phase two of the snowflakes. So we're very excited about that. And Cherie's done a lot of good field diligent work. What towns are these in?
Well, Kuz Bay, all along the coast, but even the casino provides theirs from this producer that we found. But it is all along the coast, too, so.
Right, and so there is...
And he's been in business for 25, 30 years, so...
So we're excited about using something within the state that's got a quality product. So the next thing I want to talk about was the collaboration between Travel Oregon, the City of Gold Beach, and Wild Rivers Coast Alliance. And through the help of Jody and Tammy and myself, we now have Meredith completing the grant application to Wild Rivers Coast Alliance. Our LOI has been accepted, now it's the grant process. We're very excited about that, and what that will be is it's phase two of Art Currie Fleury. The first phase was a mural. The second phase are going to be banners that are about so high, to be determined, made out of wrought iron, the same fabricator that did our benches will do the wrought iron stands. And then, there'll be banners of outdoor recreation, it's going to kind of be our theme through town. And so we're very excited about that, and hope that it all goes through with Wild Rivers Coast. The next thing that will be announced on Wednesday at Rotary Community Center is that the Oregon Community Foundation has awarded us a grant for $14,900 for six more benches. So those will go over to Main Street. We're really excited. And it will be, you know, the artistic park-like benches, again, with trees and grasses and boulders and rock. And so we're very excited about adding to that. The next thing, so we've spoken with Jeremy and Carly at the library about the idea of creating a program called the Youth Volunteer Program. And it would involve the incentive kids and a paid supervisor to take the kids around the small little utility truck and do all the weeding and the deadheading and fertilizing of all these different plots that we're creating. Like, for instance, right now the high school's in bad need of a lot of work. And so Carly and Jeremy are saying, every Friday, kids are all out of school early. They, it's part of their funding to get their kids volunteering in the community. We would also apply in this grant for insurance for liability for all the kids, so... And with the library being so positive, we're excited about going after that for another grant. So that's in the works. The next one we have, which we're very excited about, is Party at the Park, with celebrating 130 years of Gold Beach. And Michelle's already got a band reserved. And we want to do pizza and beer and barbecue. We want community sponsors. We're thinking a scavenger hunt for kids. All kinds of things are coming out. If anybody's interested, we're always looking for volunteers to help. So we're excited about that. And the next thing that came out, which is interesting, I don't know if you saw it, Jody, but Meredith mentioned that, you know, we have a mission statement, and we have a purpose, and we have an action plan. We do not have a strategic plan. And it would be really great to have a strategic plan for, I don't know, Marie's... And it would be really great to have a strategic plan for, I don't know, Marie's asking for it in this grant right now. Uh, maybe a three-year plan and talking about hiring Meredith to be a consultant to come to Gold Beach and get key business people, community members, to be involved in our vision for a three-year plan. And, uh, today, I was just talking to Kim, Shereen, and Cockard, and she'd love to come. So, I think we'd get a lot of good interest in that. So, we're kind of excited about that idea. And, um, that's it.
Well, thank you very much. Sounds, uh, pretty exciting.
Yeah, busy.
Yes.
And so, thank you again. Thank you so much, the city. We would not be standing here or getting any of this done without your support. Really appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. All right. We have an update on the Butler Lane name of the building. Uh, I see Mr. Michaels is here. Uh, and before you step up, Administrator, I'd like to give your update on this.
I need to declare a couple of demented persons, my parents from property next door, so I need to...
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, I had my assistant, Anthony, go out and take some photos today. So, those are the photos in front of you. That's what it looked like this afternoon. And as Mr. Mayor said, Mr. Michaels is here for, for questions.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, didn't we say that, uh, something fun had to be done with in the next 30 days at the last meeting?
Yes, it had to be, um, it's my understanding that it had to be completely cleaned up by, in the four weeks.
My understanding as well. At every rate, Council, would you like to say anything before I invite Mr. Michaels up?
Go ahead with...
Anything? Uh, Mr. Michaels, would you please come on up and state your name for the record, please? George Michaels. Could you give us, uh, some sort of explanation?
Uh, well, you made the comment about trying to get people to do stuff. It's hard to find anybody that wants to work in this community. I find they find the young men to help. And, uh, and then they come today with, uh, but, uh, I do have a building completely down to the frame. And, uh, I have all load out today to, to burn place. And, uh, uh, now it's finally clean up phase. I got the, the, it's no longer a building. It's just a flat surface. Got a word from, uh, Wes's towing. And he says they've got bins in the yard now, but they were waiting on getting their excavator back so they could empty them. And he's shooting on having me at Ben here by the end of the week or being next to me. I've got a huge pile of metal. And I've got, there's, uh, the old refrigerator, wash machine, and dryer are still setting on the, on the trailer right now because I ran a ring to stack them up before I was putting scrap metal. And, uh, I'm still pursuing getting it cleaned up. And, uh, but it is a long recovery.
In a realistic sense of time, what are you looking at? I mean, as far as being able to have that box completed?
Well, if he shows up with metal bins, I can get that back out of my way. Realistically, uh, probably about three weeks.
I'm sorry?
About three weeks to have everything up. Because he keeps putting, you know, like I said, uh, they keep, every time I talk to him, they keep putting me off on trying to get the metal. Uh, the wood that's stacked there alongside of it now is all gonna be gone in the next year or two. That's all the, the, what was left of the structure. And I already hold, uh, the load out today. In fact, I don't know if, but I haven't seen the pictures that Anthony took this current. Okay, well, shows the trailer's gone now because I got rid of it this afternoon. And, uh, like I said, the, the work for the fire stuff's gonna go out to the scrap metal, but kind of run out of room. And that's what you see here is, and if you notice this trash bag there, or trash can I've been shoveling. And, uh, that's, I'm gonna continue and get it cleaned up. And, uh, like I said, I've finally gotta get him in to come and work with me. I've been, his grandmother's having words with her doc. I've actually finally found a way to go work.
Yeah, I totally understand.
But doesn't think that they're worth $25 an hour.
Now, I know it's difficult to get help at times. I know that. Uh, Council, do you have anything that you'd like to, uh, Mr. Michaels?
What is your plan to do with the frame?
Frame itself, I'm going to, uh, see about securing, uh, some, uh, financing and maybe rebuild on the frame, or I might pull it out. I'm gonna get it cleaned up. But, uh, I'm gonna get everything off to the floor right now. Figure out where to from here, whether I can find a, a hole I can afford or whether I can afford rebuild on this. I have talked to, uh, Mr. Flattable about engineering on it. And he said he'd help me with it. And I already talked to the county about that possibility also. And they said as long as I had an engineering report from Flattable, they would give me a permit to rebuild on it.
Councilor Kaufman, do you have anything else?
I'm on the speaker.
Oh, that's right. Receiving that. I'm sorry. I forgot. Well, Councilor Madison, do you have anything?
Well, I'm concerned about the amount of loose materials. And with the storm that we recently had, where those materials flew to, and I'm wondering...
Actually, I didn't lose that.
If I may, um, I'm concerned about those materials and how they may cause the liability for neighbors.
Well, the last one to come through, it doesn't actually move. Like I said, I'm in hopes that he delivers the van by the end of the week so I can get that stuff all loaded and get it the heck out of there. And the wood that's on this pile here, uh, that's gonna be all gone with the next year or two. Because I've already pulled all the trailer load away today, and I'm gonna reload it again tomorrow. And, uh, we're gonna get enough. That's just all wood right there. And, uh, I'm gonna get it all down to burn up and keep calling Wes. I'll be getting up his butt.
Well, cut to the quick. What would you like to see the Council do at this meeting? What are you looking for?
Just know that I am trying to get this done. I can't afford to hire a equipment and come in and do all that. I'm stretched pretty thin, it's just.
You know, we're actually, this is where it gets really dicey for the city, is that when a building has been determined to be a hazard, the longer that the hazard remains, the more the possibility that someone could get hurt. I personally understand the predicament that you're in. I mean, as far as being able to get help, I've talked to businesses and others as well, too. And it's difficult to get good, reliable help now. I know, I know that. But on the other hand, we have a responsibility to the city, the citizens within it. And, um, it's kind of the, the rock in the hard spot that we're, we're in a little bit, but...
No, I can just keep pushing on Wes to get him up here so I can get the metal out of there. And that's, I think that's her biggest concern about the metal that's laying there, whether it blow away or not.
Well, Council, what are you prepared to do? Are you prepared to give Mr. Michaels another month? Or do we proceed with, uh, the next step is, Administrator, go ahead.
Well, um, I think at this point, the, um, because Councilor Kaufman had to recuse herself, we only have two members, so...
We only have three as far as the vote. If there's a tie, I go.
That's true. Um, but, um...
We could defer. That's not a bad idea, though. But I, is that what you were getting to?
Well, what I was gonna say is, I, I don't know, um, you write, you know, on the tiebreaker that, that you need to break the tie, but, um, since we don't have a quorum with her recusing herself, do the two remaining ones just want to, to give him direction and then have it revisited? And hopefully, we have a quorum, which we rarely never have a quorum. I mean, that rarely happens. But do you want to revisit it in January? I, I don't know.
Now, we, yeah. Yeah, that's not a bad idea, simply because in essence, that would be pretty much what I was thinking anyway, is to allow him a little bit more time. But then, Council, you're gonna decide whether or not that you want to do that. I think the Administrator brought up a good suggestion.
But I would say that it's already been deferred once. So, I would say by the January meeting, that's the drop date.
Uh, my biggest, my biggest issue with it is the amount of metal that's just laying out there. And like, I would, I would like something within at least the next week to two weeks that you contacted the Wes guy and that there's something set up and you're gonna get something delivered.
All right.
Or from somebody else or anything.
Yeah. I, I talked to him and he said the escrayer's supposed to be back beginning of the week, which is now. And, uh, he figured I have the bin to me by the end of the week and the beginning of next week.
You know, that is something in writing that you have contacted him, that we're not just basing it off of hearsay type thing.
I can go get my phone and show you where I called. You know, I, I've got him on speed dial, my, to my phone. And I called and talked to him on Friday afternoon, and he said that, uh, the escrayer's supposed to be back beginning of the week, and they're getting the bins cleaned out. He's shooting to me by the end of the week. And if I don't, if I don't have a bin by the end of the week, I'll make arrangements for a trailer and bring it in. I've got one guy that said that I can use his big trailer so twice a month to tell us. But, uh, if I don't get the bin by the end of the week, I'll make arrangements, get a trailer and get that done.
And Councilor Pagano, then, what would be your rule on that? I'm gonna ask Councilor Madison.
I...
I'm, I'm speaking now specifically of the Administrator's suggestion.
I'm fine if we're in it as long as we have something going. I mean, the drop is...
Jan, January is it? That's the last?
That would be at the last, but I want to see some type of progress. I know you've been doing stuff, but just piling stuff up isn't good, isn't enough.
All right. That was getting, getting all the walls down to get into the pile situation. Like I said, that's gonna be...
All right, thank you. Councilor Madison?
I agree that we can defer it one more month, but I'm very concerned for the amount of materials loose that were in the storm season.
I know.
Really, I'm very concerned about that. And I, I don't know what the circumstances are, but I would probably, you know, look at CTRs or backup or, you know, pull some friends that you have that have trucks, you know, whatever friends and neighbors can do to help.
All right.
All right. I'll give Wes another call in the morning.
Okay, you, you have that month. Councilor Pagano had mentioned that all to be able to see some, some evidence of things taking place quickly. Okay, just listen to me for a moment. And what we'll probably do, probably task the Administrator to, maybe next, within two weeks, to make sure that we've got pictures out there and to see the progress that's being done.
All right.
If they now...
To alleviate, uh, issue or, uh, time on the city to take care of it. I like, I can send your pictures.
If you're willing to do that, then that's great.
Yeah, that's fine. I've got, I've got your, your email. I'll just send your pictures as I make progress.
Okay, and the, the January meeting is January 6th.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, there's a proposal on the Oregon DQ of January statewide, single-use plastic bank, uh, bag ban. And, um, that's interesting. I, when I read it, I may have gotten a little bit confused, but it almost sounded as if the city can determine the rate per bag or the score can. I mean, did I get that all wrong, Administrator?
The, what I was getting at is that the only thing that the cities can do differently than the state, like if they have local rules, um, is the fee. Everything else, they, the state trumps. And that was just, um, they had sent that to us this month. We did post this on our website as well, because they just, the DQ wanted us to get the information out. So, I thought by including it in the package, it's posted on our website, too, so.
Do you have any idea what sort of fee we would charge you? I know in the past, we were looking at a nickel. I'm not sure. Whatever.
Um, if we had our own bag ordinance. I know at one time last year, we were talking about maybe 10 cents, but we, we never did pass a local one. So, we, so unless the city decided at some later date that they want to pass their own, that would be the only thing that you could do differently. But I know last year when we were talking about this, that was, the end result was the city, the state was likely going to pass it by the year's end. So, just let the state deal with it.
Yeah. So, that's basically for information right now?
Correct.
All right. Council, do you have anything that you'd like to state about this?
And that was mostly just as an FYI.
Okay, there's the invite for December 9th, Curry County Educational Session on Special Districts. And I believe that's gonna be in Brookings, correct?
Correct. And again, that is another FYI. Um, the County Operations Director, Ms. Schmelzer, had sent that email. And so, I just posted, I just pasted her email into the agenda report. Um, if, if you have questions, uh, she had asked that they be sent early so that they have time to, um, you know, address everything. But if you want to attend, it's at the, it's gonna be at the Elks Lodge on December 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00.
Is anybody, um, any Council member, would you be so inclined to attend that? I think it might be important, at least here for the city, to hear what's going on.
I, I was planning on trying to go.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Do you think there'll be room?
Good question.
I, from what I'm reading on social media, every special district's planning on voting. Like, full boards.
That's why I think it'd even be better if you could make it, you know? All right. Then we have the LSC Municipal Thumbs workshop. That's Kuz Bay, December 12th. That's one I believe that I've signed up for or will sign up for. It's that one that costs $25.
Correct.
And that is from 5:30 in the evening to 9:30 in the evening. So, coming back late.
Yep, if you would like to, um, sign up for that, just let me know when I need you guys to sign up.
You gonna go? Oh, well, good. All right, so that makes two of us. At least you'll be able to attend hopefully. All right. We have, thankfully, we have a very, very short meeting tonight. Uh, we're gonna go in now directly to the city administrators' report. After that, you've got your agendas, I'm sure. And that's where we just speak about something that's coming up, or one thing or another that has interested us. And, uh... And I don't think we'll be through that much longer. So then, my City Administrator.
Yes, and unfortunately, I did not actually put together a report today because I was working on audit stuff, because the auditors are going to be here for their final visit on Wednesday. So I was trying to finish up the stuff for the audit. So it's actually been kind of quiet this time of year, it's quiet for us in the office, not a lot going on. The big thing, the one big thing I can report is tomorrow, Chief Krieger is leaving to fly to Texas to pick up our new vehicle that we ordered last year. And this is the Type III vehicle that it's a, it kind of looks like an assault vehicle, actually. I'll have pictures for you next month. And he, I just spoke with him this afternoon, is going to be, he wrote a very comprehensive report a couple of years ago for the council for the different equipment needs that we had. But now that we've gotten the rescue rig, and then this will be our Type III engine, he was going to put together some information about what the purpose of each of the vehicles is and what the department hopes to accomplish by them. So that's the big news in the office.
Very well.
And we did, I should say that.
He's going to drive it back?
Yeah, he's going to drive it back. We, if, if they delivered it, they were going to charge a pretty hefty price to deliver it. And they actually paid to fly him there. We have to pay, you know.
Is he going to be driving him alone?
I think another person from the crew is going with them. Yeah.
When we get that 15, what do you think?
Yeah, and that was actually one of the things that he wanted to do, so that, I think it was the pilot last year when we got the rescue rig, the headline said Gold Beach's new toy. And that was kind of, it was kind of offensive to the whole team because it's definitely not a toy. Yeah, it's a life-saving machine, it's not a toy. And so he wanted to kind of prevent that from happening again, that there's a very specific reason why we purchased the equipment that we purchased, and they're definitely not toys. Yeah, they're not toys. And I also wanted to, the storm that we had on Tuesday last week, we didn't have any problems city-wise, we didn't lose anything. We did have to close early that day because electricity went out, and when the electric goes out, we are pretty much, we can't do anything. So, so we did close early that day, and the visitor center also closed early that day. But, but we didn't lose anything, all our buildings survived, all our infrastructure survived, so that was our answer.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Counsel Madison, do you have anything that you'd like to pair with us? One thing?
Yes.
Oh.
I attended the DLCD gathering up north, hearing support a few weeks back. That was great. I think the biggest takeaway from that was the need to reassess zoning in between rural and urban and how we might get their attention in really making that happen and not just talk about it. So that was the general consensus, so that was pretty interesting.
Would it, I mean, evidently it seemed as if it was information that we could actually apply here or what?
Yeah, I believe so. There was, the second most urgent topic was water, which is pretty common. And it's amazing how that fluctuates between different jurisdictions.
Sound good, thank you, ma'am. Counsel Pagano.
Can we talk about fundraiser techniques?
Pardon me, sir?
Can we talk about fundraiser techniques?
Sure.
I saw today that the Juvenal Department from the county is putting on a ugly sweater walk. So it'll raise money for the advocacy of youth. It's Saturday, December 4th at 2:00, it'll start at the courthouse, I think it goes to get stop Java, get candy canes and tea or something it was, and then back down to Jerry's Grove Jets where it ends, and Samsel will be there. Just thought it was kind of a neat idea, could maybe raise funds with people.
A ugly sweater walk.
Main Street was part of that as well. They were sponsoring it.
Oh, okay, good.
And there's prizes.
Prizes. You heard that, dear? Anyway, Counsel Kaufman.
Well, I have two things. The first was I was traveling last week during that storm, and I was in northern Oregon where it wasn't storming. And I got home Wednesday, and there's needles everywhere on the roads. I'm like, oh, they'll get to that next week. An hour later, you're convinced that's deeper. I mean, I know that the city had it, the staff had a ton of things to do, but they still realized the road was like, missed the road, so I was pretty impressed. And the second thing was I contacted a gentleman that's wanted to develop Ingle Beach for a while. But I know him through a coalition, so he works all over the state. And I just let him know about something I'd heard. And he said, you know, I, I have a property in Ingle Beach, and it is the easiest city I have ever worked with. I want to develop Ingle Beach. And I was like, wow, you don't hear that every day, so I wanted to make sure everybody hears that, so.
Well, thank you. It's good news.
Yeah.
All right.
Two of those good staff.
As far as me, I did want, we're getting a little bit of feedback, I think, or probably a little bit better. All right. I did attend the Small Cities, LOC Small Cities meeting, and that was in Coopier. And I did find out a few things. There is, actually, ODOT has a grant for school safety and stuff like that. I didn't know about that, I'm sure you did, but, but I was wondering if that might be used in conjunction with $100,000. I mean, in other words, if we applied for that, if we could do that conjunction with $100,000 that we received from Small City Lot.
It depends. Some of the grants, you can't use other grants to be like a match, but if it's going to be, I'm thinking, you're probably thinking the Safe Routes to Schools.
Yes.
Okay, we did actually apply for one of those several years back. The one thing, the one thing I like about the Small Cities grant is that there's not a lot to it. There's usually only like one page, you just have to provide some, some maps and stuff, and it's really easy. The Safe Routes to School is sort of like the OPRD grant. You have to like give your firstborn child for it. So not that we couldn't apply for it, but there are a whole lot more work. And the last time we did apply, it, I mean, we had to send out this survey through the school, and we had to do all this stuff, and a lot of time went into it, and we didn't even get rated. Because they, they rate them on, so, but that's not to say that we shouldn't try again.
Okay, I would just, more than anything, just encourage about that. The other thing, too, is on April 24th, and obviously this coming year, they'll have the LOC Local Government Spring Conference. Now, the drawback in that, they're good conferences, don't get me wrong about that, but the drawback with that is that it's in Hermison, which would entail, if any councilor wanted to go to that, and I would encourage you to, I mean, if you did want to go, I would encourage you. You would be gone at least a couple days. I would say more, more to the point, probably three. But it is something that we are going to be getting further word on it at the beginning of the new year. But it's just a heads up in case any of you would like to go to that. And I think it'd be a rewarding experience. I personally don't want to, I go to enough things as it is, so, but if we can have some council representation, that would be nice. So just giving you a heads up on it. Other than that, I don't really have anything else, generally speaking, at this time. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to say a few words, then give that to them. If there is nobody out there with nothing more to say, then what we're going to end up doing is making sure that everyone knows that the next regularly scheduled city council meeting is Monday, January 6th, and it will be at 6:30, and it will be here. So with that in mind, entertain a motion to adjourn. Is your motion said adjourned? Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded by Counsel Kaufman. Discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And we'll be done.